The Clerk will now proceed to read the orders of the day.
Finance Bill, Committee.
Order, under the order of the House of twenty seventh of November, we shall now move to committee of the whole House. Order.
Finance Bill, Clause seven and Schedule one, clauses eight to eleven and Schedule two, clause twelve, clauses fifteen to eighteen, Schedule three, clauses forty-seven to fifty-three, and any new clauses or new schedules relating to the subject matter of those clauses and those schedules.
I remind members that in committee, members should not address the Chair as Deputy Speaker. Please use our names when addressing the Chair, Madam Chair or Chair will suffice. We will begin with Clause seven, Stand Apart, with which it will be convenient to consider the clauses Stand Apart, Schedules and New Clauses on the selection of paper. The question is at Clause seven, Stand Apart of the Bill. I now call the Minister Tulip Siddique.
Thank you. Since twenty ten, the UK has experienced low productivity, rising debt levels and declining public services. Public sector net debt is its highest since the early nineteen sixties and ninety-eight point five percent of GDP. And per capita GDP remains lower than before the Covid nineteen pandemic. In July of this year, the government uncovered a challenging fiscal and spending inheritance with a twenty-two billion pound in-year pressure in the public services. The OBR's review into March spending forecasts conclude that had the information that had since been shared by the Treasury been made available to them at the time of the March budget, there would have been a materially higher Dell forecast for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. This was the result of the previous government not factoring in the impact of a series of new challenging pressures on the public finances, not taking the difficult decisions needed to address these pressures, instead making a series of commitments that they could not fund. This government is committed to fixing the foundations and delivering a decade of national renewal. And in to do so, we must turn the page and take a different approach. And at Autumn Budget, the House would have seen that the Chancellor set out the government's first steps to repair the public finances by taking the tough decisions needed to address the twenty-two billion pound in-year pressures to avoid further damage to our public services, including securing five point five billion pounds of savings. We're also putting in place significant reforms to strengthen our fiscal and spending framework, which will improve certainty, transparency and accountability, and ensure this can never happen again. This government is taking the tough decisions on tax, spending and welfare that are necessary to repair the public finances and restore economic and fiscal stability. These choices are not easy, but they are transparent, they are responsible. And with such a difficult fiscal position, they will ensure that the government can deliver on our commitments to not increase taxes on working people. The changes to the main rates of CGT in Clause seven to eleven will help to address the gap in public finances while retaining the UK's internationally competitive investment climate. The new rates are revenue maximizing in the current design of the tax system, generating an additional eight point nine billion pounds over the forecast period. The UK's headline CGT rates will remain lower than France, Germany and Italy. And the highest rate is still lower than it was between twenty ten to twenty sixteen. The new rates will mostly affect people who earn income from selling financial assets. The government is taking the difficult but responsible decisions to ask this group to pay a little bit more tax in order to restore economic stability. Madam Chair, Clause twelve represents the first step in a package of reforms to the taxation of carried interest by increasing the applicable rates of capital gains tax to thirty-two percent for carried interest arising on or after sixth April twenty twenty-five. These reforms will put the tax treatment of carried interest in a fairer and more stable footing for the long term, while preserving the UK's competitive position as global assets management hub. I will begin with clauses seven through nine concerning the capital gains tax package. CGT is charged on individuals' annual capital gains, net of losses and allowable costs, less than one percent of adults pay CGT per year. These are lower rates available for relief, including business asset disposable relief and investors relief. CGT has an annual exempt amount of three thousand four individuals, which keeps people with lower levels of capital gains out of the system. To repair the public finances and in order to help raise the revenue required to increase funding for public services, the government is increasing the main rates of CGT. These clauses will increase the lower main rate of CGT from ten percent to eighteen percent and increase the higher rate from twenty percent to twenty-four percent. These changes affect disposables made on or after thirtieth of October twenty twenty-four. These clauses also increase the CGT rate at which business asset disposable relief and investors relief are changed in a phased way from ten percent to fourteen percent, effective from sixth April of next year, and from fourteen percent to eighteen percent, effective from sixth April twenty twenty-six. Phasing in the rate increases for these CGT reliefs demonstrates the government's commitment to a predictable tax system. The government does accept that for some entrepreneurs, a lower CGT rate will be factored into their plans for exiting the business, which can be a once-in-a-lifetime event. And although it is right to increase CGT rates to raise revenue, it's also fair to give business owners some time to adjust. These changes will raise two point five billion pounds per year by the end of the forecast period, while ensuring the UK's headline CGT rates remain below France, Germany and Italy. Turning to Clause ten, Investors Relief offers access to the lower rates of CGT on the disposal of qualifying unlisted shares. Its objective is to provide the financial incentive for individuals to invest in unlisted trading companies over the long term and help companies in accessing other forms of investment. Investor Relief's lifetime limit was previously ten million pounds, compared to Business Asset Disposable Relief's lifetime limit of one million pounds. This disparity in lifetime limits is unfair, we feel, towards entrepreneurs and could encourage harmful tax planning strategies. The changes made by Clause ten will reduce the Investors Relief lifetime limit to match that of Business Asset Disposable Relief at one million pounds of qualifying gains per person. Investors Relief has received little take-up since its introduction in twenty sixteen and so the government expects that this measure will affect a very small number of individuals. Turning to Clause eleven and Schedule two, which introduces transitional arrangements and anti-forstalling rules. The transitional arrangements are consistent with similar rules put in place when CGT rates were charged in person in twenty ten. The anti-forstalling rules draws on the approach taken when changes were made to Business Asset Disposable Relief in twenty twenty. Transitional arrangements are needed for a small group of taxpayers in some specific circumstances. These taxpayers will pay capital gains which are ascribed to the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five tax year in general, not really any particular point in the year. And because Clause seven makes in-year changes, the government has a legal responsibility to clarify the capital gains tax liabilities of these taxpayers. To avoid taxing these individuals retrospectively, the legislation puts in place transitional arrangements. The relevant capital gains are treated as arising in the earlier part of the year and therefore subject to the previous rate schedule. From April twenty twenty-five, there will be no need for these arrangements to remain. Anti-forstalling rules is what I will turn to next, and some taxpayers will have tried to lock in the old rate by entering into various artificial arrangements and specific anti-forstalling rules are needed to prevent abuse. The anti-forstalling rules target disposals entered into before thirtieth October twenty twenty-four but completed after that date for the main rate change and Investors Relief lifetime limit reduction. They also target disposals entered into or after thirtieth October twenty twenty-four for the phased rate changes applying to Business Asset Disposable Relief and Investors Relief. These provisions ensure that such people can still access the previous rates and the previous Investors Relief lifetime limit, but only where the disposal has not been artificially structured for the purpose of securing a tax advantage. Carried interest, Madam Chair, I will now turn to Clause twelve, which concerns CGT on carried interest gains. Carried interest is a form of performance-related reward which is received by a small number of individuals who work as fund managers. And unlike other such rewards, carried interest can, where certain conditions are met, be subject to capital gains tax. And you would have heard at the Budget that the Chancellor announced that the government will reform the way carried interest is taxed, ensuring that this is fairer and in line with the economic characteristics of the reward. And from the sixth of April twenty twenty-six, a revised regime will tax all carried interests within the income tax framework with a seventy-two point five percent multiplier applied to the amount of qualifying carried interest that is brought into charge. The government is also consulting on potential new conditions of access to the regime. Legislation to implement this revised regime will be included in a future finance bill. Turning to Clause twelve, in advance of implementation of the revised regime, the government is acting now to increase the rates of capital gains tax which apply to carried interest. Clause twelve therefore increases the rates of capital gains tax for carried interest arising on or after sixth April twenty twenty-five from eighteen percent and twenty-eight percent to thirty-two percent. And from that date, the single CGT rate will apply to all relevant carried interests subject to the same conditions as currently. Madam Speaker, to conclude, the increases to the main rates of CGT to eighteen percent and twenty-four percent represent a balanced and responsible approach to revenue raising, which will help the government to improve the UK's public finances and services while remaining competitive for investments. These clauses phase in the rate increase for Business Asset Disposable Relief over eighteen months to mitigate impacts where the previous level of relief was factored into anyone's plans to exit their business in the short term. This underlines the government's commitment to supporting entrepreneurs and recognizing the vital role that small businesses play in our economy. In addition, the move to a single higher rate of CGT on carried interest at thirty-two percent demonstrates the government's commitment to decisive action now, while we rightly take the time to undertake technical consultation on the revised regime. I therefore move that these clauses stand part of the bill.
Just before other contributions take place, a reminder when I'm not sitting in the Chair is Madam Chair or Madam Chairman, and I call the Shadow Minister Gareth Davies.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Always a pleasure to see you in committee and to serve under your chairmanship. I rise to speak on behalf of the Opposition to new Clause four and new Clause five, which stand in the name of my right honourable friend, the Shadow Chancellor. But first, let me set the scene for clauses seven to twelve. When announcing these changes in her budget, the Chancellor said, "We need to drive growth, promote entrepreneurship and support wealth creation." She said something similar to the BBC in twenty twenty-three. She told them, quote, "We want Britain to be the best place to start and grow a business." And this was why, and I quote, "I don't have any plans to increase capital gains tax." This bill corrects the record. Labour want to increase capital gains tax, so clearly they don't have any plans for Britain to be the best place to start and grow a business. Is it any wonder that business confidence is now the lowest we've seen since the pandemic? Madam Chair, Clause seven increases the main rates of capital gains tax from ten and twenty percent to eighteen and twenty-four percent respectively, with Schedule one making consequential changes to reflect that these rates are now equal to those on residential property. The OBR rates the costings on this policy as highly uncertain. They say, "These costings are among the most uncertain in the policy package, reflecting the range of potential behavioural responses." So, Madam Chair, this government is far too quick to ask others to explain how they would pay for Labour's policies when they're clearly failing to convincingly explain how their own policies would pay for themselves. I'd also like to take this opportunity to highlight an issue raised with me by the Chartered Institute of Taxation, and I first place on record my thanks to them for their invaluable support. They have been informed by HMRC that it's too late to change the format of the relevant twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five tax return pages to accommodate this in-year change. I would therefore be very grateful if the Minister could provide the following assurances to them. First, that HMRC will be properly equipped to implement this measure. Second, that the changes will be published as widely as possible. And thirdly, that an appropriate level of understanding will be shown to taxpayers contending with these complications. Madam Chair, clauses eight and nine increase the rates for gains which qualify for Business Asset Disposal Relief and Investors Relief. From the sixth of April twenty twenty-five, the ten percent rate will increase to fourteen percent. From the sixth of April twenty twenty-six, it will rise again to eighteen percent. Again, as the Chartered Institute of Taxation has highlighted, because the increase to the main rates of capital gains tax is effective immediately, this leaves a window where people selling their business can save up to fourteen percent of capital gains tax until April twenty twenty-five. In other words, the tax in this bill doesn't cultivate a start-up Britain. They incentivize British business owners to sell up and sell up soon. This could have been avoided, along with the administrative complications I've already outlined, had measures in Clause seven been implemented from the start of the new financial year. So can the Minister explain why the timings of these provisions appear, at least, to be so untidy? Or for that matter, how exactly these drive growth, promote entrepreneurship and support wealth creation? And I will simply say that if honourable members from across the House are not satisfied with the Minister's explanation, I would encourage them to vote for new Clause five, which would require a proper assessment of the impact of this perverse incentive. Clause ten reduces the lifetime limit for Investors Relief from ten million pounds to one million pounds, while Clause eleven and Schedule two bring in transitional rules and anti-forstalling provisions. On those anti-forstalling provisions, the Chartered Institute of Taxation notes that the anti-avoidance measures risk being unfairly retrospective, easy for me to say, capturing those who entered into commercial contracts in good faith before the budget on the grounds that they don't satisfy the stringent requirement put down by the Treasury to be wholly commercial. So can the Minister tell the House why the wording is so tight? Because widespread concern over being hit with unfairly retrospective taxation would have a chilling effect on parts of the economy, exacerbating uncertainty among those who already feel that they've been blindsided by this government? And with permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to dwell in a bit more detail on Clause twelve, because for me, this sums up the Labour budget. Only Labour could increase spending by seventy billion pounds a year over the next five years, the equivalent of a furlough scheme every year, and still have growth downgraded as a result. Only Labour could come up with a measure which is a tax rise that loses money for the exchequer. It is so bizarre, it is worth repeating. Clause twelve is a tax rise that actually loses money. Clause twelve increases the rate of capital gains tax applying to carried interest gains by as much as fourteen percent by applying a single rate of thirty-two percent in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six financial year, after which Labour proposes to take carried interest out of the capital gains tax regime altogether, as the Minister was saying. The Treasury's own red book says that this measure will not raise a single penny in revenue, while at the same time, HMRC have disclosed that this measure will cost them four point five million pounds. That's four point five million pounds to implement a measure which only impacts three thousand one hundred individuals. Let me put it another way, Madam Chair. The government could have given every individual affected a tax cut worth one thousand five hundred pounds, and the cost to the exchequer would have been no different. This is total madness, and it's just about the only measure in Labour's manifesto they've actually kept. The OBR have said that this measure ranks among the most uncertain in this entire budget. It's why new Clause four would require the Chancellor to review the expected impact of this policy on key behaviours as highlighted by the OBR. I would also be grateful if the Minister could provide explanation of why this one measure, which impacts so few people, costs so much, four point five million pounds, when the cost to HMRC of implementing other changes, such as to capital gains tax in this budget, costs six hundred thousand pounds. Madam Chair, by the Chancellor's own admission, these measures make Britain a worse place to start and grow a business. In fact, these measures tell entrepreneurs, "Don't start up, sell up." And these measures introduce a tax rise which unbelievably loses money. I hope honourable members will agree with me that we need to shed more light on the true impact of this budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I call Ewan Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to serve under your chairmanship. Today I want to talk mostly about the new Clause five on capital gains tax, but I also, given the remarks made by the previous member, will want to make a few remarks on entrepreneurship more broadly and on the incentives for such a new business. My constituency of Early and Woodley in the Thames Valley is one of the hottest destinations for business investment and for new start-ups in the tech and pharmaceutical sectors. And I've met a number of those very inspiring entrepreneurs to talk about their start of the business journey. Now, I think it's very widely known that entrepreneurs when they're starting with a passionate project are not thinking about the disposal and the taxation regime at the end of that whole journey. They are thinking about the infrastructure and the support that they can have around them that brings their idea to fruition. And for the tech and pharmaceuticals entrepreneurs in Early and Woodley, that is about transport infrastructure, that is about a skill space, that is about schools, colleges and universities in the area that can produce the kinds of graduates who will then staff their company. It's about a regime that is welcoming to entrepreneurship and is welcoming people to live in and to prosper in. And I think for all those reasons, I very much support our budget and the budget that brings more investment to infrastructure across the UK. Now firstly, on capital gains tax, I very much welcome the measures announced by the Minister in the new Clause five. And let me remind the speakers on the Conservative benches opposite that it was after all Chancellor Nigel Lawson who equalized the rate of capital gains tax with income tax in nineteen eighty-eight, a much more dramatic measure than what we are proposing today. Now, that equalization back then was proposed because of the issue of tax avoidance. And I'm sure that many people who are listening to this debate may not be familiar with this, given that the vast majority of people in the UK, myself included, pay income tax as our main means of taxation. And for the vast majority of people, they have no reason to ever come into contact with capital gains tax. So for the purposes of understanding on this, let me illustrate what I mean by tax avoidance. This was brought up to me actually when I was canvassing a few months ago in the summer in the north of my constituency by a now-retired consultant who, as I knocked on his door, said to me, "What are you going to do about capital gains tax? Because I want you to make sure that this doesn't happen anymore." And then he then proceeded to illustrate the means by which he had paid less income tax than he otherwise would have through the capital gains tax system. I thought a particularly principled and quite honourable admission for him to make to his, I was then his prospective MP, his parliamentary candidate on the doorstep. So many of us pay income tax, and we are all familiar with the way that that structures. But for those of us who have the ability to structure our income by not receiving it from a payroll that is not working for a company, but by structuring it as self-employed or consultancy income and then funneling it into a business of our own creation, that is the channel by which many people avoid paying income tax on activities that are arguably income-like. And that happens, as I said, with a minority of people in the UK because the vast majority of people, again, don't have access to that route. The vast majority of people, of course, earn money through working for other people through companies, being on payroll and not being able to structure their own companies. But when those companies that are then holding the arguably income revenues are then disposed of, that is when capital gains tax comes into the picture. And of course, the rate of capital gains tax is much lower than the rate of income tax, and that is where the gap that is illustrated and that that retired man in my constituency illustrated to me a few months ago comes from. Now, it's very important, I think, ladies and gentlemen, that the, and Madam Speaker, sorry, that it's very important, Madam Speaker, to me, that the tax system is efficient in raising revenues, which is what our budget sets out, but also that it's principled in terms of making sure that the tax purposes for which we have channeled certain, that we have allocated to certain measures are actually raising the right taxes, that they are targeted towards the kinds of activities that are meant to be taxed. And I think that all of us in this House today would probably agree with me, in this committee today, would agree with me that we should pay tax through a progressive system. And that does distinguish between different forms of revenue-raising activity, but that allocates people fairly and proportionately to those right and relevant activities. And I think also today, I'm reminded of the measure that came out, of the analysis that came out during the last government regarding the tax affairs, of course, of the former Prime Minister, who paid twenty-three percent in average tax on his twenty-two point two million in earnings. And that was, of course, possible because of the relatively low rate of capital gains tax that he was then paying on the vast majority of his earnings which came through capital and not through earned income. Again, I'm sure to the vast majority of people listening to this debate, that is a reality far outside of anyone's understanding. The vast majority of people in the UK earn income through going out to work and working hard every day. And it's for those people, the working people of this country, that this budget has been made, so that we can lift livelihoods across the country by properly funding our public services, by closing the different gaps that have emerged and by closing the significant overspend which the previous government made, the in-year overspend of twenty-two billion pounds. And through those measures and by ensuring the financial stability of our tax system and the economic stability of our country, we then will start to raise living standards across the UK. And for those reasons, I very much support the measures raised today.
Thank you. As colleagues can notice, the Speaker's Chair is vacant, so it's Madam Chair or Madam Chairman. I call the Liberal Democrat spokesperson Daisy Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I commend the government for looking at capital gains tax as a potential source of revenue to get public services back on their feet. But we Liberal Democrats do believe that there would have been a better way of doing it. Right now, capital gains tax is unfair for everyone. Most people already pay too much capital gains tax when they sell a property or a few shares because the system doesn't account for inflation over the time that they've owned them. But at the same time, Madam Chair, a tiny number of super wealthy individuals, the top naught point one percent, are able to exploit the capital gains system as effectively one giant loophole to avoid paying income tax like everyone else. According to the latest HMRC statistics, twelve thousand multimillionaires used the loophole to pay less than half the top rate of income tax on their combined fifty billion pounds of income. Instead of raising capital gains tax across the board, we Liberal Democrats would have liked to have seen the government properly reform CGT to make it much fairer. To provide the comparison, Madam Chair, under the Labour government's proposals, the main rate of capital gains tax for basic rate taxpayers is being increased from ten percent to eighteen percent, and for higher and additional rate taxpayers, from twenty to twenty-four percent. According to the government's own statistics, this change will raise about two point five billion pounds per year by twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty. Under the Liberal Democrat proposal, we would have separated out capital gains tax from income. We would have raised the tax-free allowance, provided a new allowance for inflation and had three different rates of capital gains tax. Under our proposal, that would have raised five point two billion pounds, more than twice as much. As colleagues will be able to hear, the key in our proposal is to reintroduce indexation effectively in allowance, keeping people from paying tax on gains that are purely the result of inflation. This would be fair for ordinary people selling a family home or a few shares, but it would also incentivize long-term investment by ensuring that taxpayers aren't penalized due to inflation if they hold their assets for a long period of time. In summary, Madam Chair, the Liberal Democrat proposals for reforming capital gains tax would be fairer and would raise twice as much. The Institute for Fiscal Studies said that our proposals were moving CGT in a sensible direction. Our amendment is incredibly simple and would simply require the government to produce a report setting out the impact of the change. a report setting out the impact of the changes of capital gains tax made in this act, both on investment and on the disposable income of people in different income brackets. The objective behind that, Madam Chair, is to illustrate to the government that there is a fairer way to reform capital gains tax and to encourage the government in the spirit of constructive opposition to look at our proposals in future years.
Jim Dixon.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to serve under your chairship and I'm grateful for the opportunity to take part in this committee, the whole House, for what's a crucial bill underpins the new government's aim of fixing a tax system that's become less fair and less sustainable over the 14 years under the party opposite. In other words, ensuring that the wealthiest pay their fair share and increasing funding for public services. And I won't detain honourable members long today as we've debated these measures at length already, but I just want to make a few brief comments on the portions of this bill relating to capital gains tax. And I do think, as other members have pointed out, we do need to remind ourselves of our starting point, which, as the Director of the Institute for Fiscal Studies, Paul Johnson, in his response to the budget, said, it does pair repeating that the fiscal inheritance that this government faces is truly dire. And it's in this context that this bill and the wider measures announced that the budget should be seen. And as the IFS have set out, capital gains tax is paid, and as other members have mentioned, is paid by less than 1% of the adult population, that's around 350,000 people. And if we break that down further, around 12,000 people or 0.2% of the adult population, those realising gains of more than a million pounds account for two-thirds of capital gains tax. So 12,000 people paying a little bit more and they are the main contributors to capital gains tax. And on the bill itself, clause seven raises the headline rates of capital gains tax to 18% for gains within basic income tax band for basic rate taxpayers and 24% if you pay higher rate income tax. And these levels have risen to match the unchanging residential property rates. Now, these changes are welcome and actually perhaps not as substantial as was widely speculated in advance. And it is important that we look at comparators with neighbouring countries. So these rates, even after the changes, compare very well with our European neighbours. So in France, as has already been said by the Minister, capital gains tax sits at 30%, rising to 34% for high earners. Our closest neighbour, Ireland, often seen as a sort of haven for entrepreneurs who feel the UK isn't a good place to do business, our closest neighbour, Ireland, charges 33%. And in Germany, capital gains tax is charged at 25% plus a 5.5% solidarity surcharge on the tax paid. So clause 12 of the legislation also includes a long-needed reform in the treatment of carried interests. And I'm pleased that the government is proceeding carefully with this long overdue measure, moving us towards a tax regime where carried interest is within the income tax framework. And as other members have already said, that is important. So these measures, I believe, will contribute to the crucial revenue that must be raised to fix the foundations of our economy and repair our public services. And I do think, in finishing, we need to remind ourselves of the words of George Dibb, the Associate Director of Economic Policy at the IPPR, who said after the budget, with these changes that we're discussing now and with others in the budget, after at least a decade of under-investment, there's now real hope that the government can start to fix the UK's economic foundations. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
I call Dave Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We believe in the SNP and in the Scottish Government in progressive taxation. I think that's evidenced in the changes that we've made to income tax since that was devolved. And we'd like to have seen more progressive influence on the changes that have been made here rather than simply clawing at the allowances and increasing the rate. There's nothing, Madam Chair, in clauses seven to 12 designed to make matters better in Scotland, but at least in that, the Labour Party is consistent. Inheritance tax and capital gains tax are increasingly out of step with modern activity within the UK economy. As the IPPR points out, the household wealth in the UK has risen from three to over seven times the national income since the 1980s, yet over the same timeframe, wealth taxes have not risen at all as a share of that income. Taxing unearned wealth more fairly and efficiently is a legitimate long-term ambition within a state where the economy is on life support. Taxpayers are left wondering in this budget whether more tax rises are on the way or not after a substantial lack of clarity from the Chancellor, who once, a week or so ago, said that they wouldn't be coming back for more tax rises or indeed more borrowing, but has since refused to echo those rather injudicious remarks. If the Chancellor doesn't have the confidence to stand by her own statements, it's hard to imagine the effect that that will have on businesses and investor confidence across the UK. The Chancellor should have worked with economic experts such as the IFS to create a capital gains tax that is fairer and more growth-friendly, but instead she's been captured by the same old Treasury dogma which has served the UK so badly over recent decades. Capital gains tax raises a growing amount of revenue, about £15 billion last year, partly reflecting the increased role of wealth accumulation in the UK, but it's still less than 2% of all tax take. And although CGT is paid by around 350,000 people each year, two-thirds of it of those receipts is from just 12,000 people who have an average gain of £4 million. CGT rates vary significantly across assets and they're almost always significantly lower than tax rates on income. That rate differential is unfair and creates undesirable distortions, including to what people invest in and for how long they choose to work. The IFS have criticised the Chancellor for choosing to simply increase CGT rates with no effort to carry out what they describe as much-needed reform. They also described the whole design of CGT as flawed, adding that there are steps the government could and should take to make the tax fairer and less harmful to economic growth and wealth being and wellbeing. And moreover, the Centre for Analysis of Taxation proposes further changes to CGT, including aligning capital gains tax rates with income tax rates, introducing allowances to incentivise investment, taxing the increase in an asset's value when it's inherited, implementing an exit tax to prevent individuals from dodging UK taxes on gains made while residing in the UK. The Centre for Analysis of Taxation estimate that these packages, this package would generate £14 billion, but none of this is in the bill that we're looking at today. And the IFS have commented that if the Chancellor chose to raise CGT rates while leaving the flawed tax base unchanged, she would be choosing to raise some limited revenue at the expense of weakening savings and investments incentives and further distorting which assets people buy and how long they hold on to them for. That would not be a decision, they say, of a Chancellor who was serious about growth. Well, what a portent that turned out to be. She didn't reform CGT and look what's happened to growth. Growth forecasts immediately down after first contact with this inverse Midas touch Chancellor. It's clear that in preparing her budget, the Chancellor could have done with a full hour or more with the IFS, but I doubt, Madam Chair, she would have listened.
I come to the final backbench contribution before I go back to the front bench for summing up and say the best to last, of course, Bobby D.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin addressing capital gains tax directly, I just want to make a few short remarks about the state of the national conversation on tax more generally because I think it's highly relevant. I know that tax is always something to be hit by in politics. It's violent, you are hammered by it. And so the debate ends up centring around who's deserving or undeserving of such punishment. And as a result, very few organisations are used as legitimate targets for taxation. And very rarely do we have the bravery in politics to talk about the virtues of paying tax, what it pays for, how it benefits us all, why collectively contributing to things like schools, hospitals and physical infrastructure are sensible investments and ones that we should be proud to make. And let me just say, Madam Chair, that this is where I think political conversation falls slightly out of step with the mood of the public. Because, believe it or not, I have had conversations about tax on the doorstep and mostly I meet people who are proud to make that contribution. And let me be clear also that this is not some special plea to talk about tax in a warmer, fuzzier way to improve the civility of public discourse and nor should it be confused for advocacy for a high tax-based economy. I raise this point because I think our distorted public conversation means we end up with a dysfunctional tax system that is neither efficient nor equitable. And where we're at with capital gains is a good example of this. Decades of wrangling over whether it stifles entrepreneurship or is merely a ruse for the rich often results in a pretty reductive focus on rates alone. And it seems to me that in this budget, this has happened again and I fear that we have missed an opportunity for making this tax better. As others have explained, capital gains, when put into context, it's paid by around 350,000 people, raises around 2% of total tax revenue and 12,000 people account for two-thirds of that revenue. So this is a tax that doesn't necessarily affect a broad section of society, but it does play an important role, both in investment in the economy and in the overall sense of fairness in our system. And let me start with the economy. It makes no sense to me why the government would make changes to capital gains tax without sorting out the tax base. By not indexing capital gains for inflation, you are not really taxing the thing that you say that you are taxing. We should be focused on the real gains, otherwise we risk taxing those who simply hold on to an asset for a long period of time and ultimately end up discouraging long-term investment. Secondly, we ought to be targeting capital gains at those who are making the larger gains. If very large gains are to be had, then those investments are going to be made anyway. But those smaller gains, the stuff at the margins, that is where investment decisions could really be at risk. And raising the capital gains tax allowance a bit would go a long way to addressing this, as well as deciding better targeted reliefs that more precisely encourage investment. And finally, we come to rates and the often-called for alignment of it with income. The government have, of course, moved on this a bit, but in focusing only on rates, an inherent unfairness remains. There would still be the sense there is one rule for small business and another for the giants. And by the way, Paul Johnson of IFS, when he came to the Treasury Select Committee, remarked on another unfairness about how you can simply leave the country for a few years, dispose of the asset while you're overseas in a place like Monaco and you are no longer responsible for capital gains tax. That is an inherent unfairness as well. Ultimately, with the proposed changes to rates alone, the system will continue to disproportionately benefit the very wealthiest. And it's for that reason that I cannot support this measure today. If it passes, then I hope the government will look closely at the impact of this change in isolation and consider whether further reforms are necessary in the future. Our tax system needs to ensure that everybody pays their fair share and I don't think the government has quite got this one right yet.
I come for the summing up for the front benches. Does the Shadow Minister wish to sum up? I go straight to the Minister, Tulip Siddique.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me thank honourable members for their contribution to today's debate and I'll take a few moments to respond to some of the points made in the debate and then give the government's views on the proposed amendments. If there are questions that I don't answer, I will write to honourable members as well. Just to thank the MP, the honourable member for Dartford, for his important speech and to say that I do agree with his points about much-needed reform to our tax system and to thank the honourable member for Earley and Woodley for her powerful speech and to say I wholeheartedly agree with her constituent who seems very principled and knowledgeable. Responding to the points made by the spokesperson from the opposite side, in terms of the revenue impacts of the carried interest measure, the OBR certified costings demonstrate that the measure raises revenue over the scorecard period. The budget does deliver on the government's manifesto commitments on tax. Estimated revenues for these policies have been adjusted for final policy decisions and to account for underlying changes in the OBR's forecast. But overall, the manifesto tax measures raise over a billion pounds more than, the tax measures raise over a billion pounds more than in the manifesto, he might be interested to know. In terms of his question about why are the changes being made in year, the in-year rate changes were made to protect exchequer revenues from the impacts of forestalling and it's common practice for tax changes to take effect from the date of the budget. On the question about anti-forestalling, we wouldn't expect that the anti-forestalling provisions to apply for an ordinary commercial sale of an asset where the contract was entered into prior to 13th October. These provisions target those who enter into artificial arrangements to lock in the pre-budget tax treatments. In terms of the Lib Dem opposition spokesperson and in terms of inflation indexation of CGT, indexation previously existed when CGT rates were charged on income tax levels with a top rate of 40%. A rate schedule of 18% and 24% is significantly below these levels, so for the important reason of simplicity, indexation is not a part of the system. Madam Chair, new clause one would require the government to present to Parliament a review of the capital gains tax package impact on long-term investment, disposable income across the distribution and tax revenue. And in deciding upon these changes to capital gains tax, the government has already considered all three of these factors. On long-term investment, the OBR assessed the CGT package to have no measure-specific macroeconomic impact. On impacts across income distribution analysis for all budget measures combined is set out in the impact on households publication. The government does not normally publish impacts of individual measures. Finally, the government's projection of the revenue raised by the CGT changes have been certified by the OBR and published in the budget document. Every year, the government publishes the amount of CGT paid in the most recent tax year with available data, where Table Three breaks down gains by income. For these reasons, the proposed report is unnecessary and I implore members to reject this new clause. The proposed new clause four would require that the government published a review within three months of the passing of this legislation, covering various issues in connection with our reforms to the tax treatment of carried interest. As set out earlier, the CGT rates applicable to carried interest will increase to 32% from April 2025. This is a first step in advance of moving to revised regime fully within the income tax framework from April 2026. The government believes that its reforms would deliver increased fairness and place the tax rules on a more sustainable footing while preserving our country's position as a global fund management hub. We will also be undertaking extensive technical consultation ahead of legislating for the revised regime in a future finance bill, which of course the House will have the opportunity to scrutinise. We therefore do not consider that new clause four is a necessary addition to the bill before us today, yes.
I'm very grateful, Madam Chair, to the Minister for explaining all the things she's just set out, but I didn't quite get an answer to the specific questions to why it costs HMRC £4.5 million to execute on this tax rise that won't raise any money in the next year or the year after. Could she explain why this specific measure that only affects 3,100 people costs HMRC £4.5 million but other tax increases cost hundreds of thousands of pounds?
I would ask the Shadow Minister to look carefully at the documents that we've published and he will find all his answers written out very clearly there. Turning to new clause five, Madam Chair, new clause five would require the government to publish an impact assessment for the change to business asset disposable relief. It would also require the government to compare the impact of the changes with the number of claims which have been expected if the rate had not been changed. Every year, the government publishes capital gains tax statistics which include the number of business asset disposable relief claims for the most recent tax year with available data. The number of claims in 2024 to 2025 compared to upcoming tax years will therefore become public information in time. Meanwhile, the fiscal impact of the changes is set out in the tax information and impacts note for this measure which has been published online. It would not be practical for the government to publish counterfactual comparisons for all tax changes and doing so for business asset disposable relief would create an unsustainable precedent. The government recognises that monitoring and evaluation is critical to maintaining the efficiency of any tax measure it introduces and will continue to do so as appropriate. For these reasons, new clause five is not a necessary addition to the bill and I ask members to reject it. To conclude, I hope I've been able to reassure the members that I've raised new clauses and amendments today, that these additions and changes aren't necessary for the reasons that I've set out. Therefore, I would urge the House to reject new clauses one, four and five and I beg to move the clauses seven to 12 and schedules one and two. And I beg to move that clauses seven to twelve and schedules one and two stand part of the bill.
The question is that clause seven stand part of the bill. As many of our opinions say aye. Off the contrary, no. The ayes have it, the ayes have it. We leave the House, which shall put together the questions that schedule one be the first schedule to the bill, that clauses eight to eleven stand part of the bill, that schedule two be the second schedule to the bill, and that clause twelve stand part of the bill. The question is that schedule one to be the first schedule to the bill, that clause, clauses eight to eleven stand part of the bill, that schedule two be the second schedule to the bill, and that clause twelve stand part of the bill. As many of our opinions say aye. Off the contrary, no. The ayes have it, the ayes have it. New clause five has been selected for a separate decision. Gals Davis to move new clause five formally.
Formally.
Business asset disposal relief, review of increase in rate.
The question is that new clause five be read a second time. As many of our opinions say aye. Off the contrary, no. Clear the lobby.
Order, order.
The eyes to the right, one hundred and five; the nose to the left, three hundred and forty.
The eyes to the right were a hundred and five, the nose to the left were three hundred and forty. So the nose have it, the nose have it, unlock! We now move on to oil and gas. We will begin with clause fifteen, stand part with which it will be convenient to consider. The clauses as schedules and new clauses as on the selection paper. The question is that clause fifteen stands part of the bill. I call the minister, James Murray.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, at the budget in October, the Chancellor set out the decisions we have taken to restore economic stability, to put the public finances on a firm footing, and to embed fiscal responsibility in the work of government. By wiping the slate clean of the mess we inherited, our government can now focus on boosting the public and private investment that is essential for sustainable, long-term growth. And it is through sustainable economic growth across the UK that we will create wealth and provide security, making people across the country better off. That goal of raising living standards in every part of the UK so that working people have more money in their pocket is at the heart of the government's plan for change that the Prime Minister set out last week. That plan also set out the government's commitment to securing homegrown energy and protecting bill payers by putting us on track to secure at least ninety-five percent clean power by 2030. Now, Madam Chair, we know that making the transition to homegrown energy has required immediate action to unblock investment, including our decision to reverse the de facto ban on onshore wind. It also means that government has its part to play alongside the private sector to make sure investment happens on the scale and at the pace that we need. And that is why the clauses we are debating today is so important, because they represent a key mechanism that will help raise the funding needed for that investment to be delivered. The approach we are taking is a responsible one, one that recognises the role of businesses and their employees in the energy industries of today and tomorrow. And that is why, since we formed a government, I and my colleagues have been working closely with the sector affected by the Energy Profits Levy to make sure that the transition is managed in a way that supports jobs in existing and future industries. Our approach, Madam Chair, recognises that oil and gas will have a role to play in the energy mix during the transition for many years to come, and balances this with helping to raise the revenue we need to drive investment toward the energy transition. That approach is what our legislation delivers, and I welcome the chance to set out the details of how it does so. As we know, the clauses we are debating today concern the Energy Profits Levy, a temporary additional tax on profits from oil and gas exploration and production in the UK and on the UK continental shelf. The levy was introduced by the previous government in response to the extraordinary profits being made by oil and gas companies, and it's fair to say, in response to a substantial amount of political pressure from members now on this side of the House.
I thank the minister for giving way. Does he believe that the oil and gas companies are still making extraordinary profits?
I believe it is fair that the oil and gas industry makes a reasonable contribution towards the energy transition that we face. We need to ensure that in the transition from oil and gas, which will play a key role in our energy mix for years to come, that that industry also makes a contribution towards the new clean energy of the future. That is the way to have a responsible, managed transition, working with the industry, making sure a fair contribution is made, but making sure that we don't shy away from making that transition at the scale and the pace that we need to bring down people... I will give way.
May we just try to understand the logic of the minister on this? First of all, he recognises we're going to need oil and gas. Secondly, he's going to tax oil and gas companies. And thirdly, he's telling that there's an environment which he is creating, or his government is creating, which doesn't have a future for oil and gas, and he still expects them to invest. Where's the logic of this?
I'm glad the honourable gentleman gives me a chance to set out why the government's plan is the right and balanced approach, because what we are doing is ensuring that oil and gas is supported in making the contribution we know it will make to our energy mix for many years to come, whilst also asking them to make a contribution toward the transition to clean energy. The oil and gas industry recognise that a transition is underway to clean energy. You know, they want to make sure that they are supporting investment and jobs within their industries, but also contributing towards the transition which is underway. And we know that having that fair and balanced approach is the right way to protect jobs and industries of today and tomorrow, and also crucially, to make sure we protect bill payers by having permanently lower bills and greater energy independence.
In the last financial year, the oil and gas industry made six point one billion pounds of profit despite the chuntering of the opposition benches. Does he agree with me that it was the Conservatives that initially introduced the energy levy, and we are simply ensuring that our oil and gas sector pay equivalent sums to ensure that we transition to a green energy future, and that this money is necessary for that transition to occur? Thank you.
Well, I thank my honourable friend for his intervention, and he's absolutely right that what we are asking oil and gas companies to do is to make the fair and reasonable contribution towards our transition to clean energy. We know that that transition is underway. We know that it is important that oil and gas companies make a contribution, but we want to do that in a way that protects jobs and industries both of today and of tomorrow. I will give way.
The oil and gas giants did make eye-watering profits at a time when finally the Conservative government introduced a levy with a loophole that then let the oil and gas company off the hook. Isn't that exactly why the government should support the Liberal Democrat amendment, which actually demonstrates how much of a missed opportunity it is and how much money we could have raised had this loophole been closed earlier?
I'm not entirely clear, Madam Chair, that's what the Liberal Democrat amendment does in this debate, because we've been clear that our intention is to end unjustifiably generous allowances, and that is exactly what we're doing by abolishing the core investment allowance, which was unique to the oil and gas taxation, and is not available to any other sector in the economy. I will give way.
I thank the minister for giving way. New research published in the last few days has found that fossil fuel companies reported profits of nearly half a trillion dollars during the 2022 energy crisis. Contrast this with people struggling with fuel poverty as they choose between heating and eating. One in seven households in my constituency of Camber, Ridruth and Hale are in fuel poverty. So does the minister agree with me that extending and increasing the Energy Profits Levy are key levers in redressing and supporting this imbalance for households?
Order. Interventions, that was very neatly done, but interventions have to be very close to what we're debating right here and right now. Minister?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank my honourable friend for his intervention, and I hope that his constituents will see the benefit of bills being lower in the future as a result of the investment that we are ensuring is delivered both through the public sector and the private sector in the clean energy sources of the future. Because, Madam Deputy Speaker, we think back to a few years ago when the Conservatives in government introduced the Energy Profits Levy after substantial political pressure, I think it's fair to say, on them. We knew that at the time the extraordinary profits were driven by global circumstances, including resurgent demand after Covid-19 and the Russian invasion of Ukraine. Households in the UK, however, were particularly badly hit by higher oil and gas prices, as the government at the time had failed to invest adequately in energy independence or measures like home insulation. When the Energy Profits Levy was introduced, an eighty percent investment allowance was also introduced, and this was later reduced to twenty-nine percent when the levy rate increased from twenty-five to thirty-five percent in January 2023. An eighty percent decarbonisation investment allowance was later put in place for decarbonisation expenditure, which is money spent on the reduction of emissions from the production of oil and gas. Now, while the levy was initially set at a rate of twenty-five percent, the previous government increased the rate to thirty-five percent and extended its duration from 2025 firstly to 2028 and later to 2029. So turning to clause fifteen, Madam Chair. As I mentioned in my remarks earlier today, the government recognises the continued role of oil and gas in the UK's energy mix during the energy transition. We are committed to managing the transition in a way that supports jobs in existing and future industries, recognising that our offshore workers have the vital skills to unlock the clean industries of the future. I would like to put on thanks, Madam Chair, put on record my thanks, to the offshore workers I met in Aberdeen in August for giving me some of their time and their views when I was there for a meeting with OEUK and representatives of the sector. As I also mentioned earlier in my remarks today, it is essential that we drive both public and private investment to help make the transition to clean energy. The changes made by clause fifteen therefore increase the rate of the Energy Profits Levy by three percentage points from thirty-five to thirty-eight percent from the first November 2024. The clause also sets out the rules for proportioning profits for accounting periods that straddle that start date. As I have made clear already, the money raised by these changes will help to support that transition to clean energy, enhancing our energy security and providing sustainable jobs for the future. Turning to clause sixteen, which concerns allowances in the levy. The changes made by this clause remove the twenty-nine percent core investment allowance for general expenditure incurred on or after November the first, 2024, as I mentioned in my remarks to the honourable lady from the Liberal Democrats. Madam Chair, the government has been clear of its intention to end unjustifiably generous allowances, and that is exactly what we are doing by abolishing the core investment allowance. This allowance is unique to oil and gas taxation and is not available to companies in any other sector. We are bringing the level of relief for investment in the sector broadly in line with the level of capital allowances available to other companies operating across the rest of the economy through full expensing, which we are committed to maintain. The Energy Profit Levy's decarbonisation allowance will be retained to support the sector in reducing emissions. Qualifying expenditure includes electrification of production or money spent on reducing venting and flaring. Retaining the decarbonisation allowance reflects the government's commitment to facilitating cleaner, homegrown energy. However, in light of the increase to the rate of the levy, clause sixteen also reduces the rate of the decarbonisation allowance to sixty-six percent in order to maintain the same cash value of the tax relief per one hundred pounds of investment. Moving on to clause seventeen, which extends the sunset of the levy by one year, from March the thirty-first, 2029 to March the thirty-first, 2030. Madam Chair, in order to provide the oil and gas industry with long-term certainty and confidence in the fiscal regime, we are retaining the levy's price floor, the energy security investment mechanism.
I thank the minister for giving way. Certainty is only good if it's for a positive outlook, not for a negative outlook. And the honourable member for Gordon and Buckingham asked a really clear question in terms of the duration of this, not about whether or not the sector pays fair taxes. We all believe people should pay fair taxes, but does the minister still believe that the industry is making extraordinary profits?
I'd like to explain, the honourable gentleman, how the energy security investment mechanism works, because that is something which, to be fair, was put in place by the previous government, and we are maintaining it, which says that if prices drop for a six-month period below a certain threshold, then the Energy Profits Levy ceases early. It ceases if that mechanism is triggered. Now, that gives some certainty and predictability to the oil and gas sector. Should the prices go below that level, they have the confidence that the energy security investment mechanism is in place to end the levy early. Now, if that does not happen, it will continue, as we said, until March 2030. What I am keen to do, and I will set out a few more details later in my speech today, is to engage with the oil and gas sector on the post-energy profits levy regime, because I think what is important for oil and gas companies making decisions about investment is not only to have certainty over what will happen up until March 2030, but also to understand what the regime might be like thereafter. And that's why I'm looking forward to my conversations with the sector on what the post-energy profits levy regime will look like. As I was saying, Madam Deputy Speaker, that long-term certainty and confidence is being provided to the oil and gas sector by our attention of the levy's price floor, the energy security investment mechanism which I was explaining to the honourable gentleman. And this means that the levy will cease permanently if oil and gas prices fall below a set level for a sustained period. And furthermore, as I also just mentioned in response to the honourable gentleman's intervention, to provide stability for the long term, the government will also publish a consultation in early 2025 on how the tax regime will respond to price shocks once the Energy Profits Levy comes to an end. And this will give oil and gas producers and their investors predictability and certainty on the future of the fiscal regime, supporting their ability to continue investing whilst also ensuring the nation receives a fair return at times of exceptional prices. Finally, Madam Chair, I will turn to clause eighteen and schedule three, which relate to the decommissioning of oil and gas assets which are repurposed for use in carbon storage installations and pipelines. Carbon capture, usage and storage, or CCUS, is likely to play an essential role in meeting our net zero targets. The UK's estimated seventy-eight billion tonnes of CO2 storage capacity presents an opportunity for us to become a global leader in the provision of CO2 services and storage. The potential to make use of assets from the UK's oil and gas sector is an opportunity that will present cost savings and quicker delivery times for certain CCUS projects. It is right that the oil and gas owner of an asset being repurposed for CCUS pays for the ultimate decommissioning of that asset. This approach ensures that funds are available to return the asset's environment to its natural state at the end of its use in CCS. Now, in such cases, the Energy Act 2023 requires the oil and gas company to pay an amount equal to the cost of decommissioning into a decommissioning fund to make provision for the repurposed assets' decommissioning liability when the CCS project comes to an end. Now, the oil and gas company would be entitled to tax relief on the decommissioned expenditure if they decommissioned the asset themselves rather than selling it to be repurposed, yet there is currently no such relief for any payments made into a decommissioning fund, and this disincentivises the repurposing of assets for CCUS. So in order to ensure that tax is not a blocker to the repurposing of oil and gas assets, the changes made by clause eighteen and schedule three will bring the tax treatment of payments into decommissioning funds for the purposes for repurposed assets into line with a tax relief which is available when oil and gas companies decommission assets at the end of their production life. This will accelerate delivery times and reduce costs for CCUS projects while ensuring that oil and gas companies who support the transition by repurposing are not disadvantaged. The cost of decommissioning is not an allowable expense with the Energy Profits Levy, so to reflect this, payments received for these assets will not be subject to the levy. To conclude, Madam Chair, the government is committed to protecting bill payers by securing our future homegrown energy supply. Our plans will put us on track to deliver at least ninety-five percent clean power by 2030 and help accelerate the UK to net zero. Taken together, the changes made in clauses fifteen through eighteen will raise an additional two point three billion pounds over the scorecard, funding that is crucial for the investment needed in our future energy supply and to support our efforts to deliver a world-class CCUS industry in the UK. They represent a crucial investment in the future of our country, and I move that these clauses stand part of the bill.
I call the Shadow Minister once again, Galas Davis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on behalf of the official opposition to new clause three, which stands in the name of my right honourable friend, the Shadow Chancellor. Clauses fifteen to eighteen concern the taxation of a sector, the oil and gas industry, which meets seventy-five percent of the UK's household and industrial energy needs, with fifty percent of that need being met by the North Sea. It's a sector that supports over two hundred thousand high-skill jobs in this country, and that talent, along with the rest of the supply chain, will be crucial to our domestic energy transition. These realities underscore the imperative of a smooth and efficient transition and a fiscal regime which facilitates this, not least because the timeline for investment in the oil and gas industry is just so long. If the fiscal regime is not calibrated correctly, then the damage may be irreversible and the costs will be significant. To recap the measures in this bill, clause fifteen increases the rate of the Energy Profits Levy from thirty-five percent to thirty-eight percent, bringing the headline tax rate on the sector up to seventy-eight percent. Clause sixteen removes the twenty-nine percent investment allowance and reduces the rate of the decarbonisation investment allowance to sixty-six percent, so that the cash value of that allowance remains the same. Clause seventeen extends the Energy Profits Levy to 2030, at which point the government is committing to implement a successor regime to respond to price shocks once the levy expires. Clause eighteen and schedule three legislate for certain payments into decommissioning funds to be treated as decommissioning expenditure, so that these payments can attract tax relief. So the question that many are asking is, do these measures add up to a fiscal regime which facilitates a smooth and efficient energy transition? Well, not according to the OBR, which concludes that overall, on average, over the forecast period, capital expenditure is going to be twenty-six percent lower. Oil production is going to be six point three percent lower, gas production nine point two percent lower compared to our March forecasts. These are dramatic movements, and the University of Aberdeen has warned that a rise in the EPL and loss of investment and capital allowances may have the unintended effect of accelerating decommissioning and decelerating the energy transition as companies face an additional cost burden. The government has thankfully carried out a partial return, retaining the decarbonisation allowance and the one hundred percent first-year allowance, which were introduced by the Conservative Party. But I do have to ask, Madam Chair, if the government was persuaded of the importance of these investment allowances, and that removing them would do more harm than good, why persist with removing the main twenty-nine percent investment allowance? What was it about that relief compared to the others that made them want to scrap it? Madam Chair, they may talk about closing loopholes. We saw how well that went with current interest, but these measures contribute just one percent of the new revenue raised by the budget across this parliament. Thank you. Does the minister really think that it's worth jeopardising some fifty percent of our domestic gas supply for all of this? The measures in this budget essentially throw a massive spanner in the works for oil and gas, and it's clear, it's unclear, what the government's rationale for doing this is exactly. When we brought in the levy, it was to tax extraordinary profits in extraordinary times, and the revenue that we raised contributed to our efforts through policies such as the Energy Price Guarantee and the Energy Bills Support Scheme to reduce energy bills for the British people. Today, as those extraordinary circumstances subside, Labour are going and ratcheting up the levy. This sends a mixed message to the industry ahead of the consultation on a successor regime. The terms of that regime will supposedly be set by the need to respond to price shocks, yet the government's justification for the measures we're considering today has nothing to do with price shocks. Instead, today's measures are all dressed up in the language of the sector making a fair contribution, as the minister was saying, to the energy secretary's environmental ideology and ambitions. So what is the government's vision for the taxation of oil and gas in this United Kingdom? Temporary windfall taxes or permanent climate levies? This bill suggests the latter, and I'd be grateful if the minister could specifically comment on this when he stands up to respond. And when he does, one way in which he could give an indication and provide some long-term certainty would be to further confirm the future of the energy security investment mechanism that he was mentioning just a short time ago. As he kindly said, we did introduce the ESIM, so that when prices returned to normal levels, the Energy Profits Levy would end. No more windfall profits, no more windfall tax. So could the minister confirm today that the ESIM will remain in place to 2030? I think he did at the Dispatch Books, but I'd be grateful if he could reconfirm the date, the end date of the ESIM. But can he go further and confirm that it will remain in the same condition as it is today? Will the price floor continue to be CPI adjusted? The Treasury and the minister have said that it will be retained, but I think the industry would like further confirmation, as I've set out. If he could also write to me with the Treasury's latest modelling of future oil and gas prices to prove that the expected revenues are not at the expense of the ESIM, that modelling will be very important for us to understand and to get that reassurance and certainty on the ESIM. And having been in the Treasury myself, I know that modelling is continually reviewed and produced, and so I'd be grateful if he could write to me with it. These are not purely academic questions, Madam Chair. Our concern is for the hundreds of thousands of people employed by the UK oil and gas industry and for the UK's energy security, and for the efficient and smooth energy transition that we all care about. The government shouldn't be ideological but empirical in its approach to this area, which is why we have tabled new clause three, which would require a review of the impact of these measures on employment, investment, production, demand and the whole Scottish economy. If the government has already made these detailed assessments on these specific areas, we would be grateful if he could publish it. Madam Chair, on every measure, this budget has not survived contact with reality. Growth degraded, real incomes depressed, business investment reduced, broken promises and credibility completely shattered. It's not so much that this Labour government take a different view on economic matters, it's that they take the wrong view. They're the party of the tax rise which loses money, we're the party of the tax cut that raises revenue. That's why they always leave office with more unemployment, larger debts and higher taxes. They always run out of other people's money, and this government is set to do so. They always run out of other people's money, and this government is set to do so in record time.
I call the Liberal Democrat spokesperson once again Daisy Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the heart of this debate is a very stark injustice understood by every man, woman and child on the streets of Great Britain. In the last few years, oil and gas giants have made eye-watering profits, in many cases profits that they did not expect to make, and they made them off the back of Putin's brutal invasion of Ukraine and global supply chain issues that caused energy prices to soar. At the same time, people saw their living standards drop and their energy prices soar. And in too many cases, people have had to choose between heating and eating. It was we Liberal Democrats who were the first party to call for a tax on the oil and gas windfall profits back in October two thousand and twenty-one. But it was not until May two thousand and twenty-two until the previous government did eventually introduce the energy profits levy. It was half-hearted and it was woefully late. If it had been brought in when we had called for it, there would have been additional revenue to reduce people's energy bills and to launch an emergency home insulation scheme, reducing energy consumption, which would have been good for the climate, and reducing people's bills, which is good for their pockets. The previous government effectively let oil and gas giants off the hook, initially setting the energy price levy at just twenty-five percent and putting in place a massive loophole in the form of the investment allowance. This allowed the oil and gas giants to get away with vast sums at taxpayers' expense with the excuse of investments they were going to make anyway. In essence, the Conservatives were giving them tax relief on polluting activity when they should have been doing everything to raise funds, to reduce people's bills and urgently insulate homes. Now, thanks to the investment allowance, the big loophole, in two thousand and twenty-two, Shell admitted that it had paid zero windfall tax despite making the largest global profit in its one hundred and fifteen-year history, profit of thirty-one billion pounds. Now, as some colleagues in the House have referred to, Madam Chair, energy prices have come down since those record levels of two thousand and twenty-two, but the oil and gas producers have still seen huge profits. In two thousand and twenty-three, Shell saw its profit come down from thirty-one billion, but it still made twenty-two point three billion pounds in profits. I will.
Giving way. How much of that profit was made in the UK versus made globally?
To be honest, I don't know what the distinction is between global profits and UK profits, but the point is that this levy is put on the UK profits that made out of UK operations, and I hope the Honourable Lady will agree that when constituents in her constituency cannot afford to put their heating on, that she will not miss out on the opportunity to raise taxes from the big oil and gas companies. But as I was saying, Madam Chair, Shell made a profit of twenty-two point three billion pounds in two thousand and twenty-three, and BP saw its second highest profits in a decade of eleven billion pounds. And where those profits are made on UK operations, I hope the House agrees that they should pay their fair share. Now, Madam Chair, we are glad that the current government has listened to calls made by Liberal Democrats and others and finally scrapped the unfair investment allowance loophole. But we would like to ask ministers to give this House some clarity on how much money is going to be raised, particularly through the abolition of this carve-out. And by extension, we would then be able to extrapolate to see just how much money could have been raised under the previous government but was in fact gifted to the large gas giants. They may not like it, Madam Chair, but they know that their constituents are choosing between heating and eating. Madam Chair, people should know just how much money could have been raised and how much money will now be raised through this particular measure. I would just like to press the minister on specific changes to the EPL legislated for in this bill. I understand that the headline rate of seventy-eight percent was selected to match that in Norway, but I'm just wondering whether the government had considered going any further and looked, for example, at a headline rate of eighty percent. Was there a cost-benefit analysis, for example? Some of the biggest oil and gas producers in the world may well be able to afford paying a little bit more, and the additional tax revenue would surely be a big help for our public services. It could, for example, have helped avert the cut to the winter fuel payment. I would be grateful if the minister could confirm that they intend to publish Treasury analysis on how much revenue could be raised from each one p increase in the headline rate of the windfall tax. Madam Chair, I won't give way, I'm coming to a conclusion. Madam Chair, our constituents understand the stark injustice that will be addressed by this measure, and I hope the minister will accept our amendment to be transparent and show just how much money it will help to raise to put the public services back on their feet.
Harry, at clause?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll speak today to Clauses fifteen to eighteen of the bill briefly, but mainly New Clause Three in my right honourable friend, the Shadow Chancellor's name. As we know, New Clause Three will require the Chancellor to publish within three months a review on the expected changes because of the changes to the Finance Bill on things like employment, capital expenditure, production, demand and the economy. The amendment, in my opinion, is inherently sensible. It considers the importance of the oil and gas sector to the employment and economic growth both regionally and nationally in the UK. Firstly, to reflect on the need to review impact on employment. Eighty-two percent of the direct jobs in the oil and gas sector are located in Scotland, and my Gordon and Buckin constituency very much is at the heart of that. So, the provisions in New Clause Three will review the impact of the changes to employment, but also across the country, because it's not just direct jobs that are on the line, there are supply chain jobs and other indirect jobs as well. Ninety thousand of these in Scotland and two hundred thousand across the UK, they're all, of course, yes.
I'm very grateful to the Honourable Member for giving way. She highlights very clearly the economic consequences for this heading south on jobs in Scotland. Is she surprised and disappointed like I am that not a single Scottish Labour MP has turned up to take part in this vital debate?
Thank you for that intervention, and yes, we were actually just saying that a moment ago, how extraordinary it is that they're not here to stand up for their main industry. It really does show how much they value or indeed care about jobs across Scotland. So, we're seeing worrying signs already of the impact of these measures. Just a week after the budget, Apache confirmed that they would cease operations in the North Sea, saying that the onerous financial impact of the energy profits levy, combined with substantial investment that would be necessary to comply with the regulatory requirements, makes productions of hydrocarbons beyond two thousand and twenty-nine uneconomic. And still on jobs and the need to review them, according to Aberdeen and Chichester Commerce, a hundred thousand jobs may be at risk across the UK because of these changes, and the OEUK say thirty-five thousand directly related to the projects which may not now go ahead are at risk. So, surely a clause such as New Clause Three that would allow the government the opportunity to assess and account for the impact of the changes of the Finance Bill on jobs relating to the oil and gas sector, the supply chain and the wider economy should be welcomed across the House.
Honourable friend, give way.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you very much. Talking about the impact that percentages of increased tax on the industry will have on jobs, you're equally disappointed as me to hear the Liberal Democrats talking about nothing except how much cash can be raised out of an industry without asking at the same time for how many jobs that would impact across Scotland and the UK and the economy as a whole.
I thank my honourable friend for that intervention, and absolutely, I think there's a complete disconnect in this place sometimes between how much we can tax and squeeze something dry versus what that does to investment. These companies, especially the global ones, do not have to invest in the UK, they can invest across the world. They're choosing to invest here at the moment, and therefore we get jobs and opportunities and employment. That investment can go abroad, and if it goes abroad, it will take jobs with it, and that will be to the detriment of all of us, but particularly us in North East Scotland, of course.
Does she not recognise that we are in a transition period and that we need to transition in order to get to net zero? And yes, of course, we need to protect jobs, but the transition to net zero is absolutely essential.
Of course.
Thank you. Absolutely, I absolutely recognise that, and that's why it's so important that we protect the jobs and protect the investment. Exactly, the skills in our supply chain, the skills in our current companies, they are the ones who have the expertise which will drive the transition. The investment that we'll get in also drives the transition. It's these companies, the ones with the skills and expertise, which will drive the transition, and that's why we need to keep them. I will give way.
The mobility of investment in the oil and gas industry. And don't you not think it's ironic that since we're going to need oil and gas, if we tax companies for production in the United Kingdom, then they will simply produce elsewhere. Governments will get the revenue from the tax on that production, and we will pay more for imports.
Exactly, a hundred percent. There has to be a balance between production and demand, and I'll come on to demand later, but there is no point reducing our domestic production while our demand stays the same, because we're only going to fill the gap with energy and oil and gas from abroad, which is produced over higher carbon intensity in poorer working environments, where jobs and investment and overseas investment is going to take precedence over investment at home. It makes completely no sense that while we're using oil and gas, which the minister himself confirmed, but will be for a while, but we do not prioritise taking it from our own North Sea domestic basins. So, on New Clause Three, also asked for a review on capital expenditure and investment in the UK. And in Scotland alone, the oil and gas contributed nineteen billion pounds of GVA, and in the UK, the figures are twenty-seven billion. A two thousand and twenty-two report by Experian showed that for every million pounds of investment by the oil and gas industry, fourteen jobs and two point one million pounds of GVA are added. This industry is blatantly a net benefit to the UK and the Exchequer, and one what we should be encouraging investment and capital expenditure, not creating an environment where the returns does not justify the risk of investment. As my honourable friend said, the OBR's own figures show that capital expenditure will fall by twenty-six percent and therefore production of oil six point three and gas nine point two because of these changes. And we must ask, can the UK afford this? Indeed, maybe these were the parameters that the Exchequer and the Treasury are actually looking for, and if they see them as allowable. But if that is the case, what assessment has been made of the impact of this on the economy, on jobs across the UK? So, on New Clause Three, again, looking at production, the OEUK has put the reduction in production that's projected down to a rapid decline due to investment over the decade. So, having New Clause Three in place where we can assess the impact of the changes to EPL and be able to actually head this off to begin with, because as we said, while we have the demand, we're going to need the production, is really very important. And so, as we know, the oil and gas in the UK, we're still going to need it for years to come, as has been confirmed. But the changes to the EPL in the Finance Bill, and in particular Clauses fifteen and sixteen, by increasing the EPL by three percent and removing the investment allowances, the government is choosing to make our homegrown domestic energy sector so uncompetitive that current investment will fall away and future investment is no longer on the cards. And we can't afford to lose the investment, because as I said, this is the investment that will drive the transition. So, it's so important that it's protected now to help us bring the transition forward quickly and efficiently into the future. So, Madam Chair, Clauses fifteen to eighteen of the bill were introduced without adequate consultation on the impact assessment. As such, New Clause Three simply asks for a proper scrutiny of the measures' impact. If the government is confident in its approach, why resist a responsible request for transparency? My Gordon and Buckin constituents, people across Scotland working in the oil and gas sector, and indeed across the UK, deserve to understand how these changes will impact their livelihoods.
Dave Doogee, before he contributes, if members wish to speak, they need to be bobbing consistently. I can't read people's minds. And they put together a speaking list, so I call Dave Doogee.
You, Madam Chair, these changes to the EPL, particularly those contained in Clauses fifteen and seventeen, will have a hugely damaging effect on jobs and the Scottish economy. It is also an inauspicious day for Scotland and the so-called United Kingdom, as Norway's sovereign wealth fund recorded a one point seven trillion euro breakthrough last week, while Scotland's oil wealth has been squandered by successive Westminster governments. Norway gets financial security in perpetuity, Scotland gets Labour's bedroom tax, cuts to winter fuel payment on our elderly and the highest energy prices in the G twenty. That's your union dividend wrapped up and served on a plate right there. More than four hundred billion has flowed from our waters to the Treasury over the years, with very, very little coming back in the other direction. Rather than reverse this trend the Labour government has with this increase to EPL chosen to accelerate it. The cumulative effect of Clauses fifteen to eighteen will serve the death knell for Scotland's hydrocarbon production in advance of the transition. Crucially, Madam Chair, in advance of the transition, economically illiterate, fiscally incompetent and with industrial suicide as the result. A windfall tax is supposed to be a tax on extraordinary profits, yet the extraordinarily high global oil and gas prices which preceded the introduction of the tax have long since abated. Through these changes, the Labour Party jeopardises investment in Scotland's offshore energies and in so doing risks the future of our skilled workforce and our ability to hit net zero employing those workers. Analysis from OEUK shows that the increase and extension of the EPL will risk costing the economy thirteen billion and putting thirty-five thousand jobs at risk as a result of these provisions. The analysis also shows a collapse in viable capital investment offshore from fourteen point one billion to two point three billion in the period twenty-five to twenty-nine under these changes. And it's increasingly apparent the government doesn't really understand how investment horizons work offshore. They're not on a month-to-month basis, they take years to work up. This loss of economic value not only impacts the core sector itself, but domestic supply chains, companies, many of whom exist in my Angus and Persia Glen constituency, and they have an essential role to play in the just transition. The Labour Party promised there would be no cliff edge, yet they have concocted one for thirty-five thousand workers whose jobs this EPL change puts at risk. The Labour Party had claimed these changes would keep the UK in line with Norway. The regime after Labour's changes cannot be compared to that of Norway's, which allows companies a maximum seven to eight pounds of relief per hundred pounds expenditure. In the UK, this relief would be forty-six pounds twenty-five. After this last couple of weeks, Madam Chair, I'm giving to wondering if the Treasury front bench can actually count. Changes to the EPL will hinder in the just transition. The government argues that the reduction in the rate of the decarbonisation investment allowance to sixty-six percent will maintain the overall cumulative value of relief for investment expenditure following the rate increase, reflecting that this relief will increase in value against a higher levy rate. However, this still reflects a political choice to deprioritise investment in decarbonisation by Labour. Rather than allowing more valuable decarbonisation relief as the solitary positive byproduct of the tax hike, Labour has striven to ensure that there is absolutely no silver lining to this fiscal attack cloud on Scotland's energy industry.
I'll be very happy to give way. Do you agree with me that what is at the heart of this is the fact that the comparisons to Norway, whether it be about the sheer focus on trying to squeeze as much taxation out of the industry as possible without a focus on how we become more competitive? What we actually need to see for jobs and for energy security in the UK is to be comparing ourselves to the most competitive economies on oil and gas in the world, not those that squeeze and tax the most out of the industry and kill jobs.
Well, exactly. The Honourable Gentleman raises the question of jobs, and the government are playing fast and loose. Russian roulette, they're playing with the jobs in the oil and gas sector. And what they don't seem to understand is that when what they've got wrong here comes home to roost, they can't just go, oh, well, sorry, we got that wrong. When it's gone, it's gone. You're not bringing it back. This is not nineteen seventy-two, it's two thousand and twenty-four. This is not coming back. We're already in the closing chapter of the sector, and this government seems to completely misunderstand that. And the simple truth is that the UK state cannot meet net zero nor create green growth if the Labour Party's policies to hack away at both investment in the domestic workforce and in the sector are allowed to progress. It's clear that the Labour Party is abandoning Scotland's existing energy sector and putting at risk the just transition into the bargain. With these changes to the EPL, Labour will have created the worst-of-all-world scenario whereby they starve industry of investment, sacrifice the jobs of those who can deliver net zero, threaten energy security, keep energy bills harmed and harm the economy of Scotland, whilst at the very same time failing to invest the money required to truly deliver against a green transition. Analysis from OEUK shows that the UK oil and gas sector's total tax yield will peak in two thousand and twenty-six under Labour's increase to the EPL before declining compared to the previous scenario, which continues to increase Treasury receipts over the period. The analysis shows that while the expected tax take from Scotland's oil and gas producers would increase in the very short term, ultimately, over the course of the remainder of the sector, it will result in a twelve billion pound loss in receipts to the Treasury compared to the current regime. It's heads the sector wins or tails the government loses. If the Labour Party does not care about the jobs that will be caused by this policy, the harm that it does to prospects for a just transition, nor the damage to the economy of Scotland, surely they can see that a tax increase which reeks of incoherent desperation that reduces tax receipts to the tune of that reduces tax receipts to the tune of 12 billion is at the very least suboptimal. But I don't expect the government, Madam Chair, to take it from me. But they might want to pay attention to the first one heading for the door, Apache, who said the onerous financial impact of the EPL compared with the substantial investment that will be necessary to comply with the regulatory requirements makes production of hydrocarbons beyond 2029 uneconomic. OEUK said this policy will undermine the UK's offshore energy sector and their ability to support the government's overarching goal of driving growth. This policy will trigger an accelerated decline of domestic reduction and corresponding reduction in taxes and jobs supported and the wider economic value generated. And the chief economist at the Institute of Directors said, "Autumn tax rises have dented confidence in the environment for business in the UK." I don't expect the government to listen to me, Madam Deputy Speaker, but they really should listen to those at the forefront of the invaluable energy sector. So in closing, I do ask the Minister to address the point directly that what impact assessment have they made of the investment horizon for oil and gas in the North Sea?
Where are Hope House?
Madam Chair, I rise to briefly speak in support of new clause two. I welcome the government finally scrapping the unfair investment allowance loophole for the oil and gas giant. Something we Liberal Democrats have been advocating for and called for since the last government introduced the levy too late and half-heartedly only in May 2022. Oil and gas companies made eye-watering profits off the back of Russia's invasion of Ukraine and global supply chain problems that caused energy prices to soar. And while the oil and gas giants saw record profits, my constituents in Bath and across the country faced a cost-of-living crisis. The previous government has a lot to answer for. They sat and watched as the oil and gas giant lined their pockets off the back of people struggling with their bills. It did not have to be that way, and yes, I do not want to hear it. It did not have to be that way. Those are the political choices the previous government made. The measures announced by the government in this bill are welcome, especially as they remove the 29% investment allowance except for investments on decarbonisation. It's been our Liberal Democrat policy and I'm pleased the government has picked up on it and it's now going to become reality. We Liberal Democrats were the first to call for a tax on oil and gas windfall profits back in October 2021. And while the previous government did eventually introduce the energy profits levy, that did so very half-heartedly and woefully late in late May 2022. It matters that we repeat this again and again. It is something that was failed to be done by the previous government. The oil and gas giants were led off the hook by putting in place a massive loophole in the form of the investment allowance. And thanks to this investment allowance, in 2022, Shell admitted that it had paid zero windfall tax despite making the largest global profits in its 150-year history, 31 billion pounds. This cannot be right, Madam Chair, while our constituents have been struggling with paying their bills. My honourable friend, the member for St Albans, has tabled new clause two. This amendment would require the government to produce a report, as we have already heard, about the fiscal impact of the bill's changes to the energy profits levy investment expenditure relief. We cannot lose sight of the bigger picture. To avoid a repeat of the energy crisis, we must end our reliance on oil and gas. Investing in renewables would mean cheaper energy across the country. We would no longer be reliant on dictators such as Vladimir Putin, who use natural gas as a weapon. As well as being more affordable, renewables are the best route to energy security. And it is very disappointing, Madam Chair, to hear that again and again the opposition benches are just advocating for business as usual. We need to transition away from the oil and gas. I'm happy to give away yet again.
I thank the Honourable for giving way. At what point does she believe that we will be fully able just to be reliant on renewables?
I thank her for her intervention. It is absolutely by putting in place the measures for transition that we will actually reach net zero. But if we are continuing to say, we just do business as usual, we continue to listen to the people who are ultimately not understanding that unless we get to net zero, our whole economy is going to suffer, people are going to suffer, let alone the huge migration that we are going to see by the issues that we're having through big, big problems when climate change can rule unchallenged. And this is why I absolutely, and so do my Liberal Democrats friends and colleagues, believe that the transition to net zero is important and we need to put measures in place to make that happen. It is disappointing that the previous government and now the Conservatives in opposition have still not understand how urgently we require climate action.
On understanding, would you give way?
I'm happy to give way.
I'm very grateful to her for giving way. What is her understanding of what will happen to domestic consumption of oil and gas and gas products and oil and gas products in the United Kingdom? If the industry domestically atrophies and the demand domestically still exists, what will happen in that scenario? Where will the oil and gas come from or will we just give it up overnight?
I thank him for that intervention. The whole argument is that, yes, of course, we will continue to rely on oil and gas for the time being. But unless we are starting to change something in the current projection, we will not get to net zero as urgently as we need to. And progress has been, Madam Chair, too slow. So the longer we hesitate, the more difficult it will become to get to net zero. So the urgency that this new government has understood, we are supporting as Liberal Democrats the government on putting more urgency than we have currently have previously seen from the previous government. And therefore, again, I repeat, Madam Chair, that we are supporting the measures, but we would like the government to support our Liberal Democrat amendment. As we have said, it will actually show what we can raise in terms of this closing the loophole. And it would by extension, as has been clarified by my honourable friend already, it would by extension show what has actually been squandered by the previous government. Money that could have been invested into...
I'm happy to give way.
According to the New Economics Foundation, the levy introduced by the opposition raised, the investment raised not 10.6 billion pounds that was given to the oil and gas industry. They only invested 3.6 billion pounds of that into new capital projects, taking the remainder as sheer profit. Does she agree with me that that is exactly the reason why that was a foolhardy proposal by the opposition at the time? Because actually, the profits may didn't go into investing into new capital assets, but actually largely went into shareholders' pockets?
Indeed, and I couldn't agree more and I thank him for clarifying exactly the figures here. This is exactly why something needed to change and something needed to give. I repeat, Madam Chair, that I hope that the government benches can support our amendment because it will actually, and it matters, it will lay open what has been squandered and what difference it would make if we are closing that loophole. Thank you.
Ewan Yang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologise for my inconsistent bobbing. I'm still learning when to stand up. But what has gone up and what has kept up consistently are the record profits of the oil and gas majors. And it's at that I wish to open my speech on, and I will then go on to speak about where these profits have come from and finally where the proceeds of our energy profits levy will go to fund. So firstly, on these record profits. And yes, as I think all members of this committee agree, the record profits in 2022 in the oil and gas industry were excessive. However, in 2023, let's take Shell, for example, the largest oil and gas major in Europe. Its profits barely did decrease from the previous year. And in fact, this year's profits, if we had to take the half-year profits of Shell, look likely to eclipse even that of last year. 14 billion dollars, Madam Chair, in profits for Shell alone in the first half of this year, half of which went to share buybacks. And those share buybacks do nothing to fund the decarbonisation that is so necessary for securing the future of energy production here in the UK and around the world. So these record profits, much of which have been handed back to shareholders, are going in the opposite direction of what ordinary families, working people, need. And rather than reinvest in the transitions of the future, I would argue that the party opposite are looking at the industries of the past and clinging on to a past that is quickly fading from reality. Secondly, let's look at where those profits have come from. And I quote from the House of Commons library here, when they state that generally lower wholesale prices in the last year have led suppliers to start offering fixed tariffs as of summer 2023. However, they have been far more cautious in pricing these tariffs, with prices set close to the levels of the energy cap. Any return of competition to the market is expected to be slow. And that, Madam Chair, reflects the state of affairs that we face today, where the wholesale prices of oil and gas, for example, if you look at the spot price for Brent crude in the market today, are back below the levels they were pre the Russian invasion of Ukraine. And yet the retail prices facing ordinary working families in the UK, Madam Chair, are still far above those levels. And what happens in the middle? The middle are the profits that are being taken by oil and gas companies and that are not largely being reinvested in the productive sectors of the future, but being paid back to shareholders.
Given to the Tories.
And in any market, Madam Chair, I'd argue where the return of competition is expected to be slow, there is a role for the government in regulating the fair share of proceeds of who gets the surplus from that market. And here I would pause and say, when we look across this committee and across this house, when we look at who is arguing for the interests of working people and when you look at who is arguing for the interests of the oil and gas profit-making giants, I think it's very clear to see the political divisions in this house. When there are schools, Madam Chair, in my constituency of Early and Woodley, who are fundraising to insulate themselves, when the school where I live in Maiden Early is asking its parents' association to help provide better wooden frames for their windows because they are leaking in the winter. That is a public estate that our government has been elected to fix and to repair and that we will set about doing so with the profits and the levies that we discuss in the bill today. And I will take that intervention.
I thank the Honourable Member for giving way. When she says that it's clear who's on the side of working, working people versus the companies, my constituents are the people working in the oil and gas sector. They're the ones most at risk of losing their jobs if the changes brought in through the EPL go wrong. I'm on the side of working people. I'm on the side of my constituents, Gordon and Buckland. No matter what MPs from across this house say, I will always fight for my working people in Gordon and Buckland, who just happen to be working people in the oil and gas sector.
I thank the lady for her intervention. I also refer to my register of interests and my support from the unionised voices of those members working in the sectors that the lady refers to. And that is also why I commend the government's Green Prosperity Plan to set about a skills transition and funding for skills transition for those workers so that they can also profit from the industries of the future rather than the industries of the present and the past. Now, finally, I want to once mention what the energy profits levy, which raises 2.3 billion, as the minister set out over the course of this parliament, will go towards funding. And that's partly towards the funding of Great British Energy headquartered in Aberdeen, which will bring innovation in green technologies not only to Scotland but to the whole of the UK. Now, I will forgive for a moment the member for Angus and Perseus Glen and not recognising perhaps my friends, the member for Hamilton and Clyde Valley. I know that there have been an awful lot of new Scottish Labour MPs elected at the last election. It must be difficult to learn all of their faces. And I would ask that that member perhaps reflect on the reasons for the election of such a record number of Scottish Labour MPs while he sets about learning their names and faces. But the government auction of 130 wind, solar, and tidal projects in its last contracts for difference points the way to the future, Madam Chair. It points the way to generating 95% of our energy in the UK through green energy and decarbonised energy by 2030. It points the way to the transition that all of us, I hope, in this committee and certainly on the government benches, are looking forward to in the next 10 years. And also the delivery of the local power plan, which will support the local energy projects in communities like mine. The funding of local projects like Reading Hydro, which takes hydroelectric energy from the Thames, like Reading Community Energy Society, which generates solar energy on the rooftops of the University of Reading and rooftops across my constituency of Early and Woodley. It's all these projects into the future that I look forward to and that's why I commend these measures today.
Sammy Wilson?
Hello, Chairman. The government has set a number of objectives, which it wishes to achieve over the next five years. Central to that is growth, high-paid jobs, energy security, increased investment. And I've got to say, when I look at clauses 15 to 17 of the Finance Bill, I ask myself, has the government gone mad? Because the very objectives which it is seeking to achieve, it is undermining by its policy of taxation. A policy which I believe is driven more by the green ideology and by prejudice against some high-earning companies rather than by any economic logic. Because the economic logic of these proposals and indeed the predictions which have been made by those who have fed in the data and the information about these proposals indicates that at least in our major oil and energy industry, investment is going to go down, production is going to go down, and jobs are going to go down, high-paid jobs. And I know that the Honourable Lady for Early and Woodley talked about her party being a party which is interested in ordinary workers. It's been pointed out already that there are no Scottish Labour MPs taking part in this debate. I suspect that the 100,000 workers in Scotland who depend upon the oil and gas industry feel abandoned today because there is no one here defending them. Though I've got to say, if I were an MP from Scotland, I might not want to be sticking my head over the parapet in defending these kind of measures and then having to go back to my constituents to explain them. And I suspect that they'll go through the lobbies and vote for it, but they'll not have to. Well, and the Honourable Lady is opening her arms and saying, she's from Scotland. I will look forward to hearing her contribution later on in the debate in defence of these measures, which are going to cost jobs. And not only going to cost jobs, and of course, we have heard it all, but these jobs will be replaced by high-paid, skilled jobs in the renewable industry. There is little evidence of that so far. And indeed, if we look at the sources of the materials and the providers of the renewable turbines, et cetera, the skilled jobs are not in Britain. Those skilled jobs are elsewhere. And we are making ourselves dependent upon places like China, who have got control of the earth metals and the valuable metals which are required to provide the necessary equipment for the renewable industry. I'll give way.
Thank you very much for giving way. And I think you've touched on a really, really important point, which is to get... Sorry, the Honourable Member has touched on an important point. So to get to the 2030 targets the government has set out, to be able to create those green jobs the Honourable Member has referred to requires on two technologies that have not been tried and tested at scale, carbon capture and battery storage. So why would we gamble such an important 100,000-job industry in favour of technologies that haven't even been tried and tested at scale yet?
Well, and of course, it's not only a case that they haven't been tried and tested. There's also an acceptance. Indeed, the government's own stated position is that even with those technologies, we're going to be reliant and going to need oil and gas not to 2030, not even to 2040, but beyond 2050. Now, if that oil and gas is not generated and we don't extract as much of it from our own resources here in the United Kingdom, where do we get it from? We get it from abroad. And so we come to this whole issue of energy security. The nations abroad and the places where this is likely to be produced are not going to be in countries which are stable or countries which will always be favourable towards it. I'll give way in a minute when I made the point. Or countries which will be favourable to us or countries which are ruled by rational rulers. It'll be coming from countries where rulers are irrational, where they take decisions and political decisions about who they trade with and who they don't trade with on a whim. And so this idea that we're going to rely on these kinds of fossil fuels until well beyond 2050 and we're not going to produce them ourselves, in fact, we're going to discourage companies from producing them in the United Kingdom, even though we know we have the resources. And somehow or other, we're going to guarantee security of supply and security of energy for our constituents is just madness. I'll give way.
I have a very simple question to ask him, Madam Chair. Does he believe that climate change is happening and that we need to get to net zero by 2050, or does he believe it's all a hoax?
Well, only a fool would say that climate change is not happening. Climate change has occurred for all the time that this earth has been in existence. Of course it happens, and of course it is happening. And so the Honourable Lady has asked me a question, which I think anybody could give an easy answer to, and yes, it's happening. But does that mean, does that mean that, first of all, we have identified all of the sources of the change in our climate, and does it also mean that we should distort our economy in a way which she would suggest to try and make changes to the world's climate, especially when other people are not making any changes to our economy, indeed, are not following our lead? They're simply ignoring us and doing what is best, what they believe is best for their own economy. The second point I want to make on this is, so first of all, we're leaving ourselves open to a situation where companies that we need to invest, and need to invest in energy production, are not going to do so. And the OBR has made that quite clear. But even if the OBR had not done its predictions, economic logic would ensure that we understood the point that if you take investment allowances away from people and if you tax them, then they're not going to have less money to invest. The Minister makes a great point, of course, that by putting all of these measures in the statute book, he creates certainty for the industry. He does create certainty. Anybody looking at this, they know for certain what the future is, i.e. they're going to be taxed until the pipsqueak, and therefore they're going to look for other places to go and make their investment. And, you know, just to make the argument that by putting out your tax plans, it sometimes gives, it somehow gives assurance to companies, sometimes it confirms their prejudices, that really Britain is not going to be a place where they have a future or where they should wish to invest. The third thing, a third impact of this, of course, is, and the lady, the Honourable Member from Ely made this point as well, that the whole purpose of the government is tax these companies, get money, and will help working people by putting it into schools, et cetera. But the predictions are that actually we'll not be getting more revenue. Because if there's less production, then there's less tax to be paid, and if there's less tax to be paid, the government has less revenue to invest in the things which members opposite and members on this side would wish them to invest in. And where does that tax go? That tax will go to foreign companies. That's where production will take place, and that's where the oil companies will be taxed. They'll get taxed where they make their profits, not making any profits in the United Kingdom. Then they don't pay revenue in the United Kingdom, take their production elsewhere, and they get their revenue elsewhere, or pay their revenue, the tax revenue elsewhere. So, I mean, there doesn't appear to be any logic, any economic logic to this proposal, other than, well, we, the oil companies are seen as bad, so we've got to tax them, even though we're taxed heavily already. The, we want to ensure that we have this transition to net zero, even though we know that we're not going, we're still going to be needing the product which the oil companies produce for many, many decades in the future, and we turn our back on that, on that production in the United Kingdom. I think if the government is so sure that this plan, this cunning plan, I think Baldrick would have been embarrassed by this cunning plan, I've got to say, but that this cunning plan is going to work, then it should not fear any examination of it. And therefore, it should welcome. In fact, maybe, once the assessment is done, they'll be able to point to red faces on this side of the House. And if I was so certain, as the Minister is, that his plan is going to work, then I'd be saying, right, we'll do the assessment, and we'll make you eat your words in future. I suspect that the reason why this new clause two will be rejected today is that the red faces are going to be on that side of the House. The eating of the words is going to be on the government's side. And unfortunately, the people who are going to suffer will be the hundreds of thousands of people who will find facing fuel bills, rising fuel bills, the 100,000 workers will face redundancies, and an industry which we much need in this country going into decline.
Point of order, Dave Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the last but one speaker called me out in debate regarding comments, perfectly legitimate comments, that I observed that there wasn't a single Scottish Labour MP in here, and I chose my words carefully, taking part in this debate. Now, I appreciate that from Labour Members Opposite, there is a Labour Member here who, unless I'm very much mistaken, is fulfilling the role of a PPS and therefore will not be taking part in the debate. I would ask your guidance, Madam Chair, on whether or not it is legitimate to call somebody out in debate and not give them an opportunity. I tried to intervene on the Honourable Member for Ely and Woodley to correct the record, but she refused. How can we correct the record to underline the fact there is not a single Scottish Labour MP in here taking part on this debate on Scotland's energy?
The Honourable Gentleman will be aware that that is not a matter for the Chair, and therefore I can't provide advice as to how the Honourable Gentleman can put that on the record. He will know, as well as other Honourable Members do, which is entirely at the discretion of the individual contributing at that time, whether or not they take an intervention. But I have to say, the Honourable Member has done good work in putting his point on the record via the mechanism of a point of order.
Adrian Ramsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would like to echo the arguments made by the Member for Ely and Woodley and from the Member for Bath earlier in the debate. I rise to speak to whether Clause 18 and Schedule 3 should stand part of this bill. I want to argue that both should be omitted to remove the proposed new tax relief for carbon capture and storage installations as currently drafted. The tax regime for oil and gas is riddled with reliefs, exemptions and loopholes. The windfall tax introduced by the last government was widely reported. What was slightly less reported was the increased tax relief that went along with this, which allowed oil and gas companies to deduct 91% of their capital investment costs from their tax bill. We're now many years into an escalating climate crisis, one which oil companies have known they were causing since at least 1977. There's absolutely no excuse for public subsidies which incentivise fossil fuel companies to expand their operations. So while I welcome the increase in the rate of the energy profits levy and the reduction of the investment allowance, I want to highlight that because of other reliefs which still exist, North Sea oil and gas companies will still be able to offset 84% of capital expenditure against tax in relation to expansion of operations. My... Yes?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Chairman. Does the Honourable Member accept that capital reliefs are about attracting investment that creates jobs and secures energy security for this country, and that we have to be competitive in the global market, enabling UK companies to make those investments? And if we don't do that, what does the Honourable Member think will happen to that industry and to the 100,000 jobs that go with it?
Well, thank you for that intervention. And as we've heard from earlier in this debate, it's vital that there is strong government support and a dedicated plan to ensure that there's a transition for job opportunities for anyone working on the oil and gas sector. And as someone with a background in the renewable energy sector, I strongly support government incentives and policies that will help that sector to expand, to ensure we're creating the jobs and skills for people for the future. My proposals would reverse the government's proposal to offer tax relief for the conversion of oil and gas infrastructure to carbon capture and storage installations. There are many other reliefs within the tax regime which should also be addressed but are out of the scope of this bill. Now, carbon capture and storage is a complex area. There are different types of technology which use different techniques, and I support further research and development, for example, in relation to the hard-to-abate sector. But CCS cannot be used as a fig leaf for expansion of fossil fuel operations. In reality, years of hype have resulted in very little carbon being captured globally, less than 0.1% of annual emissions. Most of the carbon dioxide that has been successfully captured has been used to extract more oil. The UK has also been criticised for targeting most of its CCS at so-called blue hydrogen, which would increase our long-term reliance on gas generating more carbon emissions. The proposed tax relief is too blunt an instrument to make a useful contribution to decarbonisation. The role of CCS is still relatively untested, so it's vital we don't bake in over-reliance on this technology. Public funding for CCS should therefore be restricted to research and development and to projects which would clearly help decarbonise hard-to-abate sectors. It absolutely must not be a green light to the fossil fuel companies to carry on with business as usual and expansions of operations. And I'd welcome hearing from the Minister, and he's winding up, whether he would explore a review of this measure in line with what I've suggested. Thank you.
Adam Dodson.
Madam Chair, we Liberal Democrats were the first to call for a tax on oil and gas windfall profits in 2021 October, so I'm glad to see the current government's bill is finally scrapping the unfair investment and allowing the loophole after years of oil and gas companies not paying their fair share under the Conservatives. I'd also urge the House to adopt our table amendment to this bill. The amendment calls on the government to set out exactly how much money is being raised through the scrapping of this investment allowance loophole, and how much money was basically gifted by the last government to the oil and gas giants. My constituents in Yeovil deserve full transparency on this. Can I also take this opportunity to encourage the government to use the money raised through risks to invest more in addressing energy and environmental issues impacting my constituents at Yeovil, such as fuel poverty, particularly amongst pensioners, protecting homes and businesses from flooding, and supporting farmers in green investments, and helping homeowners with clean heating and insulation? Madam Chair, in conclusion, we must make sure our constituencies get a fair deal out of this bill. If the average taxpayer is expected to pay their fair share, then so must the wealthiest individuals and companies in this country. There cannot be one rule for them and one rule for the rest of us.
Minister.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And may I start by thanking Honourable Members for their contributions to today's debate. I'll take a few moments in my concluding remarks to respond to some of the points raised during the debate on these clauses and to set out the government's views on the proposed amendments. To start with, the opposition spokesperson, the Honourable Member for Grantham, Anne Bourne, he asked for confirmation about the energy security investment mechanism and our decision to retain it. I hope he will take yes for an answer on this, because yes, I can confirm that the ESIM will remain in effect until March 31st, 2030, when the EPL, the Energy Profits Levy, is due to end. It will continue to be adjusted in line with CPI inflation in future financial years. I hope that sets his mind at rest in relation to that point. The Honourable Member opposite also mentioned questions about modelling the impact of the energy profits levy, and I'm sure he will remember from his time in the Treasury the role that the Office of Budget Responsibility plays, and he'll see in their report published alongside the budget, their forecast of 12.6 billion pounds being raised from the energy profits levy over the forecast period, and of course, the OBR will produce updated forecasts next year. The Honourable Member, along with some of the other Honourable Members who contributed today, kept raising the phrase around extraordinary profits, trying to understand what position the oil and gas sector are currently in. And in fact, Madam Chair, this links directly to the energy security investment mechanism, because prices currently remain higher than the level we have set in the price floor. And by virtue of having the energy security investment mechanism in place, that means that should prices fall sufficiently and return to historically normal levels, then the levy will be disapplied. And so the relationship between the level and profits and the maintenance of the energy security investment mechanism is key to understanding the government's approach. Madam Chair, we also heard from the Lib Dem spokesperson, the Honourable Member for St Albans, who asked about the choice of the rate of 78%, at which we're setting the energy profits levy and other attributes of the system which we're setting up through the clauses being debated today. I would say to the Honourable Member that, you know, what we're seeking to achieve is a balanced approach. We're raising the rate to 78%, we're extending the levy for a further year, we're removing the investment allowance, which we deem to be unjustifiably generous. But at the same time, we're also maintaining 100% first-year allowances, the decarbonisation allowance, and indeed the energy security investment mechanism. And we believe that strikes the right balance between making sure that we ensure oil and gas companies continue to invest in oil and gas for years to come, whilst also making a contribution and supporting the transition toward clean energy. And it's that balance that our legislation today seeks to achieve. Madam Chair, we also heard from the Honourable Member from Angus and Perthshire Glens, who spoke about the need for long-term stability. And I entirely agree with him that we need long-term stability, but that is precisely what our approach seeks to achieve, by saying that the energy profits levy will come to an end in March 2030, by having the energy security investment mechanism as a price floor, which we've mentioned several times already, and, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, by proceeding with our consultation on the post-energy-profits levy regime to give those people who are thinking about investing in oil and gas sector confidence post-2030, not just until the end of the energy profits levy itself. The Honourable Member for East Antrim also mentioned long-term stability, and I hope, although he seems distracted right now, that will be of some reassurance to him. Madam Chair, I might also just put on record, I think the Honourable Member for Angus and Perthshire Glens referred to a 78%, sorry, 78 pounds relief available for investment in Norway compared to 46 pounds in the UK. But in fact, in the UK, whilst the energy profits levy remains in place, the sector continues to benefit from an 84 pounds 25 relief for every 100 pounds of investment. So I hope that gives him some reassurance in response to the points that he raised. I'd like to thank my honourable friend, the Member for Ely and Woodley, for her thoughtful and informed contribution, which set out how our approach strikes the right balance. And I have to say, Madam Chair, I was disappointed by the contribution from the Member for Waverney Valley, because he seemed not to support our moves to ensure that tax will not be a blocker to CCUS. CCUS will play an essential role in our progress towards net zero, and the UK has a chance to be a world leader in that sector, and I would have hoped he might support our efforts in that regard. Now, Madam Chair, I note that two new clauses have been tabled, which Honourable Members spoke to in some of their contributions, and these new clauses required reports to be published. I remember tabling many such new clauses myself over the last few years. New Clause Two, tabled by the Honourable Member for St Albans, would require the government to produce a report setting out the fiscal impact of the removal of the energy profits levy investment allowance and the change to the rate for the decarbonisation investment allowance. Meanwhile, New Clause Three, tabled by the Right Honourable Member for Central Devon, would require the government to produce a report on the expected impact of the levy changes in a number of areas, including on capital expenditure in the UK oil and gas industry and on the Scottish economy. Madam Chair, the government opposes these amendments on the basis they are unnecessary. The government has already set out the impacts of this measure in the tax information and impact note, which is published at Autumn Budget 2024. That note includes that the changes made to the energy profits levy will raise an additional 2.3 billion pounds over the scorecard, and further data on the UK oil and gas industry is regularly published on gov.uk. To conclude, Madam Chair, I hope I've been able to address some of the points raised by Honourable Members today and reassure them the proposed clauses are not necessary for the reasons I set out. I therefore urge the House to reject New Clauses Two and Three. I beg to move that Clauses 15 to 18 and Schedule Three stand part of the bill.
The question is that Clause 15 stand part of the bill. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
Of the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. The question is that Clause 16 stand part of the bill. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
Of the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. The question is that Clause 17 stand part of the bill. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
Of the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. The question is that Clause 18 stand part of the bill. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
Of the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. The question is that Schedule Three be the third schedule to the bill. As many as are of that opinion say aye.
Aye.
Of the contrary, no. Of the contrary, no. I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. New Clause Two has been selected for a separate decision. Daisy Cooper to move New Clause Two formally.
Formally, Madam Chair. Report on fiscal effects, relief for investment expenditure.
The question is that New Clause Two be read a second time. As many as are of that opinion say aye. Of the contrary, no. Division, clear the lobby. Order, order!
The ayes to the right, 74; the nos to the left, 350.
The ayes were 74 and the nos 350, so the nos have it. The nos have it. Unlock. New Clause Three has been selected for a separate decision. Gareth Davies to move formally.
Changes to Energy Oil and Gas Profits Levy Review.
The question is that New Clause Three be read a second time. As many as are of that opinion say aye. Of the contrary, no. Division, clear the lobby. Division, clear the lobby. Order, order! The ayes to the right, 184. The nos to the left, 359. The ayes were 184 and the nos were 359. So the nos have it. The nos have it. Unlock. Order, order! That concludes proceedings for day one in committee. Order. Whip to report.
I beg leave to report that the committee has made progress and asks leave to sit again.
Committee to sit again what day?
Tomorrow.
Committee to sit again tomorrow.